... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 4th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are in the white folder. If you intend to speak for public comment, if you would please sign in with your name and address, and when you're at public comment, if you would just mention your county of residence. We have absentee voting going on next door, and so just to remember to keep the noise to the minimum in the hallways, to respect them. And I think that's it. No election material is allowed in this room since we have election going on, so you can't wear a shirt that supports Commissioner Benega or Commissioner whatever. Don't support Commissioner Benega in the room. You can support him outside, but not here. Okay, with that, I would say, with that, I would say I need a motion for, to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Then we are moving on to regular business, and item number 10 is Minnehaha County 4-H Program Update, and I see Nathan just walked in. Perfect timing.
Hello. This is a new room, so. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Skatson. I am the 4-H Youth Program Advisor for Minnehaha County, and this morning, I'm here to talk about our 4-H program and give an update as to what we've been doing this past summer. I did have a PowerPoint. I don't know.
I think we're working on it.
Okay, that's fine. I could just talk through it.
We do have a PowerPoint.
Oh. So this past summer, we had a full summer of 4-H programming that included 4-H camps. I help out with the camps at Lake Ponset, so that's our East River camp, and then we also do a camp out West River.
Nathan, do you need a copy of your PowerPoint so you can see? Could we give him his tablet since we don't have it up? Because he does have a PowerPoint.
There you go. Hey, thank you. I was gonna say, I could do most of it from memory. Oh, yeah. Okay. So, we start with our vision statement. Through experiential learning and mentoring relationships, South Dakota 4-H prepares youth to lead lives of possibility amidst the grand challenges of our time. And so that's the South Dakota 4-H vision statement, just to kind of give you an idea of what our mission is. So on summer 2022, we had 4-H Summer Camps, like I was saying. Lake Ponset Youth Camp, which is the camp that I help program direct at as part of my state responsibilities for 4-H. And then we have Teen Leadership Conference, which is held in Brookings on the campus, and that's, the name is kind of what it is. It's an opportunity for teen 4-H members to go and experience and learn when it comes to leadership. We had our Youth in Action Contest, which includes our fashion reviews, special foods, public presentations, and then, of course, the Sioux Empire Fair and our Achievement Days. With livestock this year, we had 64 exhibitors and 188 animals, and with static displays, so that's our paintings, our photography, our arts and crafts, our baked goods. That was 112 exhibitors and 791 exhibits. The Sioux Empire Fair this last year went really well. I was kind of knocking on wood the whole time because it was the first fair that I had to help run the 4-H program on my own, but the fair staff were very, very helpful, and I appreciate all that they did to kind of remind me of things I've forgotten and then help me with some of the logistics that Chuck had handled in the past. Moving on to the State Fair, we had a pretty good turnout with our State Fair participation, and just a couple highlights I wanted to point out. So Tegan Vanderfleet from Humboldt, he was the first-place junior for sheep showmanship. And so showmanship, for those of you that don't know, that's where the exhibitor and their animal are judged together, and it's judged on how well the exhibitor works with the animal, how trained the animal is at being shown, and it is not judged on the quality of the animal. So showmanship is kind of more reflective of the exhibitor, our 4-H member, and the work that they put in. So it was really cool to have Tegan win first place. I know he was very excited about that. Emery Vis from Sioux Falls, her rabbit won Reserve Championship, our Reserve Champion at the State Fair, so that was also really cool. And then we had two 4-H members, Julia Tinker from Brandon and Sidney Vanderhume from Sioux Falls, selected as State 4-H ambassadors. So that's an application process. They had to go through, they had to get a letter of recommendation from me, they had to interview at State Fair, and as State 4-H ambassadors, they worked more one-on-one with state-level 4-H staff to plan leadership opportunities, including the team conference. And so it's pretty cool to have two from our county be selected for that. Just wanted to give a quick position update. So we still have a open Youth Program Advisor position. That was the position that Chuck Martinell used to be in. He left at the end of June, and so that position has been open since then. Oakley Perry, who's the State 4-H staff, he's the 4-H County Operations and Professional Development Program Manager. He's the one that's putting together that search committee, working with HR, talking with the county, and getting all the ducks in a row for that to be posted. I know there's been a couple holdups as they're working out some of the details because they wanted to change different aspects of the job description to more reflect what our County 4-H program looks like now as opposed to what it looked like eight, nine, 10 years ago, however long ago it was when Chuck got hired. But I've been told that they're hopeful any day now they'll have that posted, and so we'll start recruiting. Once that's posted, he'll form a search committee that usually includes a member or representative from the commission office, and then usually a state-level 4-H staff, adult volunteer, and myself, so. This fall, we have scaled back a little bit what we normally do because it's just me and the 4-H office, and I don't want to overextend myself. So I am focusing on after-school programming, so that includes Boys and Girls Clubs of the Sioux Empire, the YMCA, and then also starting conversations with the Sioux Falls School District. Rebecca Wimmer, who's the new after-school coordinator, that's not her official position, but basically she was hired to help overhaul the Sioux Falls after-school program. Her and I have started conversations about how we can try to get 4-H and 4-H programming in every single after-school site, which is like 30 sites, I believe. So we've started that conversation, and once we get a second person in place, we'll include them in there, and based on their talents, their interests, we'll kind of divide up our responsibilities like Chuck and I did, and we'll get running full steam again. We also have our recognition event and barbecue coming up in November, so that's an opportunity for our traditional enrolled 4-H members to receive recognition. We hand out awards for those that received Best of Show in their static exhibits, those that won their showmanship, and then we also recognize a couple volunteers for their contributions this past year. So that's all I have as far as an update this morning. Do you guys have any questions for me about the County 4-H program? I'd be happy to help answer.
Are there any questions for Nathan this morning? Commissioner Benega.
I really don't have any questions. I was at the Fair Board meeting last week, and I think everybody on the Fair Board and the people that were attending were very pleased and thankful of Nathan's seamless transition with being not only short-staffed but obviously did an awesome job at the fair. So I think you need to be recognized for the fact that this was not a simple process, and it still isn't a simple process, but we're trying to make that all come together, but thank you for your extra work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kerski.
During the fair, Nathan, do you line up the exhibitors, any animals, or who recruits that?
So the exhibitors that show at the Sioux Empire Fair are 4-H enrolled members, so they're the ones that go through the process of signing up for 4-H now, starting in the fall, and most of them are members of community clubs that are volunteer-led. So a lot of our families, especially the rural families, are families where mom and dad, grandpa and grandma, great-grandpa and grandma, all did 4-H. So there's a pretty strong tradition, so they kind of all get it. And then some of our urban families are first-generation 4-H families. We pair them with volunteers, and so the volunteers help explain all the different options for showing.
So it does kind of come through you and not the fair office?
Right, yeah. So we help run the, so we organize, so if you were at the fair this year in the expo, the west end of the expo was the open class for the fair, so that's the exhibits that they help organize and run, and then the east side of the expo was the 4-H exhibits. And so those are all exhibits that the County 4-H program, we help facilitate, basically.
Have you, I'm just kind of wondering about competition with venues and that type of thing. Have you, I know it's your first year here, but what have you observed? I mean, is there a lot of competition to get people to other venues for similar events?
As far as 4-H programs? Not really, because we have really good relationships with all the other counties around us, and so what we do offer is, for example, if we schedule our public presentation contest, so that's contests where 4-Hers prepare a speech, they come give the speech in front of an audience, and then they're scored and given feedback on their presentation skills. If that day doesn't work for one of our 4-H members, then we'll contact Lake Lincoln County or Lake Moody County to see what day they have their contest scheduled, and then if families go to one of those counties to do the contest, then we just communicate with them, get their score sheets back, and then we give them the awards in our county still. So we don't, we don't have competitions as far as like spaces or anything like that. We just, in our kind of southeast area of counties, a lot of us are, a lot of the other advisors, we all have really good relationships with each other, so we pool resources when it makes sense. Otherwise, we just kind of share and help make sure that all the 4-H kids in the entire southeast get an opportunity if it doesn't work for them to go to their local contest.
Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan, how does our county compare? We have something like 20-plus clubs, right, in our county? How does that compare to Brown County, Pennington County, others?
So I don't know right offhand club-wise. I know participation-wise, for example, enrolled members, we are right up there. It always kind of goes back and forth between us and like, us and like Brookings and probably Pennington, and then Lincoln, too, has a number of enrolled families. For example, if like at State Fair, the number of exhibits that we brought to State Fair, Lincoln and us had the most number of exhibits at State Fair, followed by by Brookings. When it comes to total reach, however, so we aren't just talking about enrolled 4-H members, we're talking about kids that we teach in after-school, kids that we reach through our involvement of Sioux Empire Water Fest and Washington Pavilion Egg Days, Women in Science, all these kind of bigger community events. We, at one point, we were 10% of the entire state reach for, like, I forget, this was like 2018, I think it was, the entire state had about, oh, now I'm not gonna be able to do the math in my head. Anyway, we were about 10% of the total state enrollment when it came to 4-H opportunities for kids, so.
Commissioner Barth.
So just earlier today, we were talking about our juvenile detention center, and it seems to me that 4-H is one of the best things we can do to keep people from winding up in our juvenile detention center, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Do you get any support from any municipalities?
Um, no. So we are supported by three different governmental levels, federal, state, and county. We do not have any support from municipalities, but that's just how the 4-H program is currently structured, is that it's a federal program that's hosted by the state and receives funding from counties.
Madam Chair, this is just a comment for all of us. I think that the city of Sioux Falls would do well to support more 4-H activities and help our, our community.
You are right on my page. Those notes I wrote. The 4-H program is a proven leadership program and has a lot of positives. As we look in this community where we talk about rising crime and juveniles having struggles, they need a positive outlook and a positive place to be, and 4-H is one of those positives. They're in the Sioux Falls Boys and Girls Clubs right now in Sioux Empire, and what could we do better than to support an already proven program that is out there? And I think if Nathan had two or three staff instead of just two for all of the youth in the state of South Dakota, the program, then you do after-school, they do the chicks in the classroom, they used to do butterflies, which because of short-staffed, they can't do it. They do a lot of really positive things. We're looking for positive places for our youth to be. Why are we searching farther than our, our back door? We already have 4-H in place. Why would we not continue to figure out ways to support them? Sometimes the state is siloed in a whole lot of different places, and I think we could figure out a way, we should be encouraging the state to support 4-H more thoroughly and in a better, in a better ways. Minnehaha County is their gem in the state as far as, I'm not saying anything against anybody else's counties, but we have the most kids. Why would we not be meeting more kids where they need to be meet? Why are we not pushing this program forward more? Okay, I'll get off my soapbox. So, anyway. Thank you, Nathan, for what you do, and thank you for picking up the slack when we lost a director and we need to figure out how to move forward, and yes, this is a state issue, so.
No, and I appreciate all the support from you guys in the commission, kind of through this transition, and then also want to just shout out quick all of our volunteers who also stepped up, especially when it came to Sioux Empire Fair, to make sure the experience was the best one for all our kids, so thank you so much.
And he's right. This is not an all-paid-for, there are a ton of volunteers that support this program, and that's what you want. You want adult parents supporting kids, keeping them out of trouble, and pushing them to that next level of young adulthood, so thanks so much, Nathan. With that, we'll go on to item number 11, which is consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a conditional gift agreement for the Safe Home Cameras. Carrie Benz, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carrie Benz from HS. I'm gonna try to hang tough here. My voice isn't great this morning. So as you know, Safe Home just celebrated its 10-year anniversary, a decade of making a difference, and as with any facility, we know that as time goes on, equipment tires, especially that, that runs 24/7, 365. And so initially, when Safe Home opened, we really advocated that we needed to make sure we had a security system camera-wise and recording-wise that would provide us with the optimal ability to make sure that not only our residents were safe, but staff as well. Over the course of the 10 years, that camera system has worked tremendously to keep all of our residents and staff safe. It's worked incredibly well, but it's tired, and we've started breaking down, and we've had cameras shut off. And so we had ITS, Integrated Security Technology and Security Systems, come in, which is a system and a company that our current IT department works with a lot, as does the city, and in conversations with the city, they were amenable to contributing to updating our security system for the cameras as well as the recording system. So they are willing to gift us, the county, $26,108 to update that entire system. So not only would we be updating the current cameras that we have, it would allow us to expand and add additional cameras to cover a larger area, especially outside of our building, as well as inside where there just happens to be some little hidey holes that people can be out and about and we can't observe them. So by signing this agreement, it just allows the city to gift the county the $26,108 for us to be able to update and improve our system. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, but I would just ask that the chair be allowed to sign that agreement so we can move forward for obtaining that system.
Move to approve with a comment.
Second.
Another motion is second with a comment from Karishka Kerski.
You know, we talk frequently about collaboration with the city, and Safe Home goes back almost 11 years when the contract was initially started. I'm glad the city has stepped up and maintained the security system and done their part to help us with what we have going on here, so just to recognize it.
Yep. I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hyburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie. Item number 12 is authorize the chair to sign the 2023 through 2027 Highway County, the County Highway and Bridge Improvement Plan. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. As part of the requirements from the South Dakota DOT for the big, the bridge improvement grant process and other administrative rules, we need to have an approved five-year plan by the council, by the commission. Part of these requirements also requires us to have a public meeting with townships and others, and we're gonna be having that tonight, 5:30 to 6:30 at the Crooks Community Center. The projects on this five-year plan were included with our budget submittal, which was approved last week.
Any questions for Steve? I would say if you go to the meeting tonight in Crooks, you'll get to see the new intersection that just opened back up again, which is very nice.
Yes.
Minus a whole lot of trees.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next one is item number 13, consider a motion to adopt a resolution for Rural Access Infrastructure Funding, the award criteria. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is the Rural Access Infrastructure Funding, or RAFE. Legislature in 2021 passed House Bill 1259. After that, we hired a consulting firm to inventory all the small structures on the township roads. This last year, the legislature approved funding. Part of the way the townships can get this funding is they need to have either an opt-out or a 50-cent levy. Of the 23 townships, in Minnehaha County, only nine townships meet those qualifications. By August 31st, any qualifying townships that wanted to participate in getting this funding needed to submit a five-year plan to the Highway Department. Of the nine county, of the nine townships, excuse me, that qualified, only five submitted a five-year plan. The next step is to award funds, which they need to have submitted to us by the end of October, and the commission would approve it by the end of this year. There was no real guidance on how to award these funds, so Jacob Mars, our Assistant Superintendent, Terry Fute from Lincoln County and I, we met about a month ago and started talking different options, and one option I wanted to follow was something similar to the DOT's big improvement scoring. So we took the 12 categories that the commission is to take into consideration for awarding these grants, and we went through line by line, and we came up with a scoring process that closely mimics the big criteria. I've sent it out to other Highway Superintendents and to LTAP at South Dakota State, and everybody likes it. Lake County this morning is also taking the same scoring criteria.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[1718.23]
wanted to make sure that we aren't creating an 18-year headache for somebody to do in terms of the reporting system. So, upon Finance and Budget Officers, Susan Beeman's recommendation, we would drop that into part of our dollars that we pay for. Mike.
And the link works with drug addiction and alcohol, and so that's really, I talked to Carol, same question yesterday, and that's a great place to put it, I think, is to drop that money into the link.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good question. Okay, I have a motion and a second, roll call, vote please.
Burr.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the time for opportunity for public comment. Is anyone here that would like to speak on public comment? And I apologize, I'm not used to this, asking for public comment at every item yet. I have to make a note to myself again. Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to commission liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
I have several. One was this past week, I was at the Safety and Justice Challenge Conference with a large group of city and county people. The Safety and Justice Challenge is the grants that we receive where we have done some work in adult diversion and looking at court systems and how can we run the process better. And so, this is our yearly convention that we're required as part of the grant to attend. Some of the takeaways I had from theirs, just talking with our group, is they came up with some new pre-trial ideas and how to, to work with pre-trial, and so we'll look forward to some of those suggestions coming forward. And another one that I mentioned this morning in our building committee was that one of the conversations at convention was the 18- to 25-year-olds, and maybe that's the 18- to 21-year-olds, whose brains are not completely developed and make poor decisions and end up in the criminal justice system, and then they end up in deeper as they continue to reoffend. And what's the best way to deal with those kids who weren't, were one day 17, the next day 18, and now are possibly going to the state penitentiary or whatever? And it was interesting, because the state of South Dakota is actually having these conversations, too, which I just became aware of when I was at convention. So, probably more to come of that in the future. There was a breakout session on it at the SJC Conference, and it was all very interesting at some of the research and work that's being started on that 18- to 20, 25-year-old population, and what does that look like in the criminal justice system? Yes, you have to pay your due, but how do we work to rehabilitate those young people? Because those are the largest numbers that cycle through the criminal justice system, and how do we work to keep them out of the criminal justice system going forward after their initial offenses? So, very interesting conversation. Next, I want to talk just briefly about the building committee this morning, where we had our second building meeting on a possible new juvenile detention center. This morning, we talked about numbers as far as costs, and continued the conversation on need. We will be having a briefing at a commission meeting on October 18th, and continue to work with just public education of what looks like we'll be possibly moving forward in the next year with renovation or a change in our juvenile detention center. A lot has changed since that building was originally built, and a lot of changes are needed, so. And then my last one was, I thought there was somebody going to be here today to speak on public comment about marijuana and children, and if you know me well, you know I talk about kids all the time. So, we do have recreational marijuana on our ballot this year, and I would just encourage you to do your research before you vote. I will be voting against personally recreational marijuana, just because of the effects that we have been told by our partner counties who are dealing with recreational marijuana and the effects on children. It may be recreational for adults, but kids who get into it accidentally or get this stuff now off the black market, as the black market actually expands when you have recreational marijuana. There's a lot of data out there. I would just encourage you strongly to read the literature before you vote and make your decision based on facts. You can search any of these states out there who have put medical marijuana on their ballots, and it has passed. The social costs go up. Those social costs are paid for by your county. So, if our social costs go up in Minnehaha County because we get no tax revenue, those social costs will be passed on to the taxpayers through your property taxes. So, just an FYI, do your research, and quit talking about that one. And I think that was all my liaison reports. Are there any other liaison reports? I don't see any. We're going to go on to non-action commission discussion. Commissioner Burr.
Madam Chair, thank you. I would like us to write a letter to the city regarding 4-H funding. I think that it's ripe for that issue to be brought up. The city seems to have money, and they have a concern about the youth and finding positive activities, so on our to-do list. The other thing is, I've pursued slightly a plan for a solar array out at the Iron Hall Center, the museum up by the Shields Ice Plex. They have 2.3 acres just south of that building on a slope, and I've talked to a group of South Dakota 350, I think their goal is CO2 at 350, but about them looking at finding a grant or other funding for us to use, so hopefully it wouldn't cost us money. But if we could, you know, produce enough electricity through solar to power the Iron Hall building, I think it would be to our benefit, and it would be a great example driving up the hill from, you know, from the south there to see Minnehaha County on the cutting edge. And thirdly, I guess, you know, talking about ballots and people that are concerned about them. I think there is an issue where, I talked to one of them last week about how when the bank counts our money by a machine, we accept that count. And he said, they said, but you can recount it. And, you know, we currently cannot recount the ballots because they're proprietary to ESNS. I think we may have made a mistake by giving the vendor of that equipment the power to keep us from recounting. It would be nice if we could do a hand recount of a precinct or a district, but we can't right now. And I think that, I think it would be to our benefit to allow that type of count by hand to those that believe that improperly believe that our machines are hacked and that our staff is somehow nefarious. Because I can recount the money I get from the bank. I always recount it when I get it from the ATM. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I thought we were able to recount our ballots, but it's a question I'll have to ask. Carol, did you have a comment? Thank you, Commissioner Burr.
Chairman, Carol Muller, Commission Office. I just wanted to just update you and probably the public, because we're a lot more active up here than we've been since we've started the move that was out there. For those people that have driven by or have been in the building, they'll note that we are under construction. We are remodeling in this building. The main driver of that is the fact that crime, public safety, all those issues continue to grow, and we've had the state's attorneys in, I think, three different locations, I believe. They're not all together. Is it three, or is it, you might have somebody in a fourth position, I don't even know it, fourth location, but in three different locations. And they continue to need more space as things continue to grow here. So, they will be taking all of, over, over all of second floor, so if you hear noise right now in the building, it's coming from that. On third floor, which is where the commission offices are now relocated, and we have rooms that we put together, a multipurpose space, and that's where absentee voting is taking place. We don't have the blinds up yet because of constraints on getting things in, so you've been noticing people coming and going, and it's been busy. They've been open for a little over a week, I believe, for absentee voting, and it is on third floor. There are elevators for you to go through and take, to come on up and get your absentee vote taken care of. Like I said, I've been impressed with how it's a steady stream of people that have been coming up here, and it works. They, some of the things that are really positive for that is that there are, I believe, 12 voting booths up, which is more than what they've had in the past. So, if you've, two years ago, if you were in a long line, you know that that line's going to go faster because we have more voting booths up here, more voting space. And if we end up in the situation, as we get closer to voting day, where we end up with lines that are out there, we will take the commission chambers, move the chairs apart, and we will set up the, I'm not sure what you call them, the paths that people go through, so that they'll be able to do. A lot of thought went into it. It's, we do what we do in order to make the best and make it as effective as what we can go through and do. So, we appreciate the support of people, understanding that as to why we moved to third floor, and a lot of things are better for us to go through and do. We've got better space for election, and all the counting will take place up here also.
Thanks, Carol. Any other non-action discussion? And I would look for a motion to recess into executive session.
Let's go to recess.
I have a motion, a second. We'll reconvene in about 10 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.